Sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, regular village board meeting to order. Is there a roll call, please?
Trustee Cook?
Here.
Trustee Forster?
Here.
Trustee Markwart?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
Trustee Takayoka?
Here.
Trustee Schenk?
Here.
President Byrne?
May I have a motion to nominate a mayor pro tem for this evening's meeting?
I'd like to nominate trustee Cook to be the...
Just for the next few minutes.
It'll take him a little bit of time.
I'd like to nominate trustee Cook to be president pro tem for the duration of the meeting, or at least until the mayor arrives.
All right.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takayoka?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Okay, we have a quorum, and the meeting's been called to order, so could everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever since.
Okay. Are there any citizens wishing to address the board?
Hello? I'm Danielle, I go to Vernon Hills High School, and I'm here for my AP Government project.
Okay, and your last name?
Parnas.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you for coming to the meeting. If we can help you with answering any questions, feel free to, you know... Okay, um, I, should we hold off a minute, I think, because I think he's coming in, because the first thing we've got is the appointment, to the appointment, the two appointments to that pension board, if he comes down, so he can go ahead and do those.
Hey, he's raising his cane. Does he have a full packet? I mean, uh, he does, and I got one. I think it's on his back. Internet's not working that well. Do you have a full?
Yeah.
Okay. If you don't have, I've got it, so...
We already start?
Yep, so...
What do we do?
Uh, we're, uh... Yep.
Is everybody here for that?
Yep, to take a deep breath, yeah.
No, Mark. Is he here?
Yeah.
Where, Mark? Mark Peterson?
No, 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 Mark Peterson.
He just had a baby.
No, Mark, Mark has a new, uh...
Yeah, his grandson.
Yeah, his son has...
Did he call?
He has a new grandchild, so he's not here this evening.
Thank you, I already knew that, but I just wanted to...
I did too, but...
Okay.
Todd's here.
Okay, Todd's here. Okay, Todd, you want to come up here? Okay, I want to raise your right hand. I, Todd Renahan.
I, Todd Renahan.
Having been appointed to the Office of the Police Pension Board...
Have been appointed to the Police Pension Board?
In the Village of Vernon Hills.
In the Village of Vernon Hills.
In the County of Lake.
In the County of Lake.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm...
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Police Pension Board according to the best of my ability.
According to the Police Pension Board of the best of my abilities.
Okay, you're swearing it.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, guys.
Close. Thank you, thank you, boards, appreciate it. Todd, I signed, or Todd signed, that's all. Just sign it. You can sign it. Todd, this is for you. What, we can't, do, we could do Mark, right? He doesn't have the beer, right?
You do it.
Carmen?
You can go to your office.
Is that a yes or a no?
Yes.
I don't have my glasses on.
He doesn't need to be here.
He does or he doesn't?
No, you can confirm the appointment.
Take care, Todd.
Okay, thanks.
You can confirm the appointment without him here.
Well, I'm gonna swear Mark Peterson in a, what, abstention, because he had a grandson today, I think.
A couple, a day ago, I think it was.
What was it?
A day ago, I think it was.
A bagel?
No, a day ago.
A day ago, okay.
No, I didn't say it.
Is it, a day ago is, you're using an Italian slang word now.
Day? I said it.
He just said... I catch that. I, I, by the way he said it, you know, he got the mask on, you know, come on. I, Mark Peterson, have been appointed to the Office of the Public for the Police Pension Board, in the Village of Vernon Hills, in the County of Lake, do solemnly swear, is that true, Mark? And affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties, the Office of Police Pension Board according to the best of my ability. Okay, well, wait for him to sign it. All right. Okay, Mark, congratulations. On, on everything. Okay. So we want to, you know, just do the honors on that. And this is a outstanding citizen award?
Yes.
Duly created by Craig Takayoka?
Yep.
Thank you, Roger.
All right, would Sue Gandhi please step forward to the presentation altar? He called all the way up. You could all come up, I don't know, somebody want to take a picture? It's okay with me. Somebody could come back here if you want to take a picture.
Come on up, you guys, these are all my people.
They're gonna take a picture?
Yes.
Yeah, come right up.
They have them all come up, hello?
Somebody come up here, somebody got a camera? Nobody's got a cellphone? Well, why don't you come up here, we get behind you.
You want to get a picture, yep.
No, but you, I will, can I have some?
Yeah, have them all come up.
I don't...
Everybody come up.
There. There.
Come on, chair.
Management in action.
Yes.
Are you everybody in the right place now? Yo, squared away? Yeah. I'll start over. Village, this is the, obviously, the Village of Vernon Hills, this is the, an outstanding citizen award, whereas, like many Americans, the experience of the Great Recession, two thousand eight, impacted Sue Gandhi and her husband. Who's your husband?
Right here.
Do you have a name?
Hasmuk.
Hasmuk?
Yep.
Okay, cool. All right, husband, all right, and her husband, who were both laid off from their corporate positions. Instead of returning to corporate work, Sue instead embarked with the concept of becoming a community resource and supporting individuals and families who are experiencing the same struggles she and her family faced. Sue has the mission of lending a helping hand to any person in need, and has been a steady resource to single mothers, struggling families, refugees, by not only providing necessities for survival, but respect and dignity. And Sue created a network that includes friends, family, and organizations that provide food, hy- hygiene products, diapers, and other basic necessities. During the pandemic, need increased, and Sue incorporated becoming a 501(c)(3), known as Sue's Pantry. And she became affiliated with many nonprofits, businesses, and service organizations to further develop her network and increase the number of people she could serve. Sue Gandhi has been a resident of Vernon Hills since nineteen ninety-eight, and exemplifies the spirit of our village through her love, compassion, and community caretaking efforts. Now therefore be proclaimed that I, Roger L. Byrne, and the Board of Trustees do hereby express our sincerest appreciation and bestow the outstanding citizen award to Miss Sue Gandhi. Isn't it Mrs. Sue Gandhi? You go by Ms.?
No.
Ms.? Oh, that, yeah, I know, that, that covers it all, right? Ms., okay, Ms. Ms. Sue Gandhi, and appreciative of her advocacy and continued support of those in need dated the sixteenth day of November, two thousand twenty-one. Congratulations. All right, Sue, you want to say a few words?
Sure. You gotta add a name here, Hsu.
Hasmuk.
Hsu?
Well, my name is Hasmuk, but they, in short, they call Hsu, yeah.
Okay, yeah, good. Well, I'm not putting it on the deck.
Well, what I would really like to say is, this wouldn't be possible without my team, this is my core team right here, and without the support of my family, obviously, my husband, my, my son, my daughter, my daughter-in-law, and all of these great people. I mean, like, if I had the food and had no way of getting it to where it's supposed to go, then there would be no point. So, we're a team, we're a circle, and we all help each other.
Could you introduce your team so they can be recognized?
Yes, absolutely. This is Pastor Jim Andrews, and his wife Laura, and we have Pam Cecil and Sharah Fata.
Well, and thank you to, to all of you for, you know, all the work you do in the community, it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, thank you so much. I appreciate you taking the time to see the work that was done. As Craig will tell you, it's been going on for a while, and it's, it was just, it was just getting done, so I appreciate that.
As soon as I hear it.
Yeah, I just want to make...
A proclamation...
Hello?
For your wife. You see?
Well, yeah.
Okay. If you open it, it's in there.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
You know, I just want to say something, if you haven't seen the video that was made that we put together, it's about seventeen minutes, I mean, I think it tells the story and gives you a very good background of what, you know, Sue and her husband has done. I mean, when I, when I stumbled upon her Facebook page, you know, you know, a few months ago, I was just like, holy cow, how did, how did someone like this fly under the radar in our community? And then just, Roger, then I called you, did I? I called you, and I said, we're going over there, we're gonna go meet this lady, and I think even, you know, even you, I know you were, you know, moved by it, because it's just like, you, you referred to her as Mother Teresa, I mean, that's, you did, absolutely.
I did, so, but with that said, and I didn't eat anything, which is surprising. Come on, it's eleven. So, it, yeah, and it was very nicely organized and very clean, and, you know, obviously, you got a great operation going, and I'll still lay it out there, you know, if you need help finding a place, so be it. If you don't want us to help you, we won't help you. You know what I mean? It's like, you know, I mean, because we ran, between Craig and I, we threw a lot of different ideas on the wall, but, uh...
No, I will...
Well, when you're ready to cry uncle, as they say, that I want, you know, okay, this is too much for here, then let us know.
No, I will reach out to, well, I have reached out to Craig, yeah, yeah.
The laser.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, you have the full support of this village to help you in any way, shape, or form, because quite honestly, I haven't met anyone like you personally, and it's a very humbling...
You know, I got one thing, and maybe we talked about it when the two, three of us were there, I mean, could you, would it make any sense to hook up with another pantry that's got a big location, or?
I mean, they can obviously send their, their families over by me, and I can help them with food.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, is there any way, if you had to, actually move in with whatever?
Oh, no.
That's just not in your...
No, no. And I would love for anybody to come and visit me anytime at all, from those who aren't...
Okay, I don't think we want to...
But, no, but, no, Mayor, because I want you to see the kind of, you know, charm and energy that's in this small place.
Could you just give a very quick intro, and for those of us who haven't seen the seventeen-minute video, in terms of where, where you're located, and what the hours are?
I don't know if we want to...
No, just very, I'm just thinking, just a quick...
No, I don't think we want to...
You got to, yeah, you got to, you got to watch, you watch it.
Just for purposes of...
Privacy. I'm sorry, I didn't understand, what was your question?
You can see, it's, you can see the...
Yeah, and, I mean, come and visit me, you know?
Yeah, he'll...
Help them come visit.
Yeah, he'll come visit.
Yeah.
I, I, so there's one last thing before you go, you know, the village staff here, and the village board here, you know, we, we want to give you something, we're gonna, I'm gonna give it to your husband, because I know, I know you, Sue, well enough, but, you know what, you, I just want you, like I told you before, you got to let some, somebody do something for you, and we'd like to do something for you, and we have a couple gift cards here for you, a couple restaurants, make sure you two go, okay?
Thank you so much. Thank you. Let the record reflect, Mike, pass this down.
Remember, you paid me at the Mazda deal.
At least you remember, you know, you look...
I could have doubled down on Roger, right?
Yeah, you might, yeah, you might have went to the, sunk to the boat or something.
Yeah, no.
But anyway.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate this, it means a lot to me, thank you so much, everybody, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Are you giving out turkeys and stuff, too?
I would love to get turkeys, I talked to Craig, like, if you can get me some turkey, I would like, uh, turkey dinners with sides.
Oh, the whole thing?
Yes, please.
Well, you, well, you got to go to a restaurant, right?
From Jewel or somewhere, if you have...
Oh, yeah, and they'll all prepare them, okay.
Yeah.
Well, okay, so then, where do you, where, what would you do with them? Are they already cooked?
Yes.
Well, that's gotta be, gotta be kind of, well, I guess you just heat it up, right?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, well, we'll take that one under advisement.
Can, can I just ask, how many families would you think you serve in a year, to, or help out?
Um, I would say, uh, between two hundred and two hundred a week.
Two hundred?
I'm sorry, two hundred and two fifty a week.
Two hundred and two fifty a week?
Yeah.
Twelve thousand families? That's... That's...
Because that includes, I mean, like, I, I have no paperwork, I don't have any numbers, but that's what I'm thinking, because of, you know, when we, well, when we give food to a family, and they're like, so, there, there are many extended families.
Right, one, one picks up the food, and there's ten of them.
Yes, yes.
Exactly, and do you have, and, and is, do you know how far your outreach is? Is it only Vernon Hills model?
No, 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 no.
What is your outreach?
Yeah.
All over?
Yes, all over, uh, Round Lake, Fox Lake, and then in, in the city of Chicago, the refugee families, a lot are living in Chicago, the Skokie, Morton Grove area, so...
Well, this, 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 this world needs more people like you and your family, your teams, so thank you.
So, there's a...
So, you're, you're, some of the Afghan refugees, yeah?
Yes.
Oh, that's funny.
We're supporting them, yeah. So, as more are coming in, and after their processing is complete, and they're coming into their homes, there are so many things that they need, a lot of them came with just the clothes on their back, so they need household items, and bedding, and clothes.
Maybe someone on the board could give you gift certificates to a certain restaurant.
Yes, absolutely. The other thing that I would really appreciate is gas cards, because a lot of my families want to come and get food, they, uh, gas is too expensive, they can't come and get food, so I give out gas cards. So...
So, I mean, do you give out, you give those out every week, X amount?
Well, as I have them, some we buy, yeah.
Do we have this in the video, that, that, that kind of stuff? But we could put a quick, you know, blast out there, that you, you need gas cards, that would make sense if they're coming to pick up the food.
Yeah.
Sue's on Facebook, I mean, people reach out to her through Facebook.
I mean, if we had like a monthly request from you, like, hey, this month, we'd like to try to raise gas cards, is there some way we can, are we able to broadcast that and support that through our channels? And say, the, I don't know what the restriction would be on that.
Yeah, we could, we have, you know, as you know, many different outlets that we have, the, the village newsletter, social media accounts, so that's certainly something we could help out with.
You know, if you just get one, it's a win, you know, if we just, if you get, you know?
Right, mm-hmm, right.
Okay, well...
I mean, there are many, many needs, you know, there are many needs that, you know, most of us take for granted, okay, the basic needs, people are struggling with, just, you know?
Food, clothing, sure, shelters, basically, transportation, yeah.
I mean, like, you go into your bathroom, you know, you wake up, you have soap and shampoo and toothpaste, it's all sitting there, right? A lot of people don't have that.
Yeah.
And it's a, you know, decision whether to buy something for the children, or, you know, the moms need things, they, Pam has a story about a mom, you know, who's looking for a coat, so, and reached out to Craig, you know?
Well, what, what the police are doing, something, the coat drive, is that all over already? We were collecting coats ourselves, and...
Right.
Isn't it the...
Yeah, I have, have you heard of Warm Coats? Warm Coats is an organization.
You could take the mask down a little, you're not gonna hurt, you're not gonna hurt me, I'm... What are you, what's it called?
Warm Coats.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and so they provide coats and shoes also, so they, they...
And that's for adults, for kids and everything?
Yes, yes, and, and kids, yes.
Yeah, I got some warm coats at home.
Yeah, yeah.
Roger doesn't fit.
And the one thing is, I want to make very clear, is I like to give things that are very gently used or new, I don't want grungy, dirty clothes, because that kills the risk... Well, I mean, like, if, you know, when you have a coat drive or something, and then I, I, you know, can't have five hundred coats be dropped off, and, and then I have to go through them all and see, you know?
Yeah, I know, I went, one time, it's...
You know, what kind of condition they're in, so...
Bears give out coats, Chicago Bears, they give out, and we, we have, you know, some relationship with them, because of Bears Fit. So, I don't, you know, but I mean, I, who knows, they, you know, I don't know if, how often they, you know, I think it's a once-a-year deal, but you never know.
You never know, right, right.
Maybe we could, we could, we could contact somebody, John, you there?
Yep, right there.
Why don't you give the Bears a call, call, what, Cliff? What's our guy, Cliff Stein?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, call him about if they got any coats, to give, you know, because they do collect them.
You're going to need more, right? Yes, yeah, yeah.
Maybe get a big bear on the back of a coat.
That would be great.
They just want a coat, they, you know, they just...
No, but I'm serious, they, I, I know they do that, so...
But that's awesome.
Yeah.
Sharah here taught in Chicago Public Schools for many years, and she knows of so many kids that, you know, have, don't...
And know where I taught.
Yeah, sure, I mean, yeah, there's, there's needy folks out there, getting around it.
Yeah, so we're trying to, you know, kind of touch as many of them as we possibly can.
Yeah, okay, well, once again, what you're doing is great, and...
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
And I'm glad we recognize you and your pals here, including your husband.
Thank you, Craig.
Well, you know how to find us, you know, and you got Craig on speed dial, so that's all right.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much, Kevin, nice Thanksgiving.
I'm sorry, thank you, thank you, thank you.
If I take another picture, you're...
That's okay.
It's okay? I got you in the back, here, there you go. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.
Okay, good night.
Thanks, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Okay. You know, Sue?
Yes, sir.
You and your husband have to stay, you know, just watch us perform.
No, you don't, there you go.
No, you got, I'm sure, you could, yeah, you're, thanks, you, again, thank you.
Thank you all, thanks.
Okay. Reminder of the holiday tree and menorah light, lighting. Okay, Kevin?
Yes, sir, this is our last board meeting before our Tree Lighting and Menorah Event on November twenty-seventh at four thirty, this is just a reminder, it'll be at our municipal golf course, and we will be taking precautions to be in, in tune with the COVID pandemic. We'll have hot chocolate, cider, and cookies that will be served outside of the event. To limit gathering indoors, we'll have some of the furniture and tables removed, and have signage encouraging people to not convene indoors and, and go outside. And also, new this year, as, as we mentioned last time, we'll have a, a sleigh from the Forge Club, which would be a nice picture opportunity for people to have their picture taken with Santa and enjoy the event, so looking forward to that.
Like at the putting green or something?
Yeah, over in that area.
That's nice.
Is the golf simulator set up? I think I saw something. So, this would be like a good way to kind of showcase that a little bit, or anything they can do to kind of show that off?
Yeah, so it will be set up, um, you know...
You're not gonna have a gang of people.
Yeah, we're trying not, we're...
Just kind of like information about, as they walk through, they have like, you know, there's some written information, and...
Yeah, we can work with, uh...
A little bit better?
Yeah, we can work with Kevin and his team out there to maybe put together a, a marketing flyer of some sort, that way we can pass it out and let people know that that's available now. I think it actually opened November fifteenth, is the official launch of the, of the simulator, so, yeah, that, that's a good idea.
Yeah, we're, we're leasing that, by year to year?
The, the simulator, no, I think we own that outright.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
So, the hardware we got up there?
Albatros, right? That's the, that's the model name.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot bigger than the Albatros. Okay, all right, Annibus Vote Agenda? Is there a motion to approve items A through G?
If I could, could we pull F out and vote on it separately?
Okay, we pull F, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve items A through E and G?
Motion so made. Second.
Motion is second, comment or questions? Roll call.
Trustee Takayoka?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye, motion carried. Aye, motion carries. Okay. What do we got here? Approval and unfinished business, approval and passage of ordinance 2021-134 and ordinance authorizing an agreement.
Go back and do F.
Oh, F, yeah, that's right, okay. F, is there a motion to approve and passage of ordinance 2021-138 and ordinance amending the Village of Vern Hill's salary program by adding the position of Support Services Manager and Part-Time Maintenance Worker? One is for the Police Department, right?
Correct.
Yeah, well, obviously the other one's for Public Works. Okay. Any comments or questions on this? If not, is there a motion?
So made. Second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Epstein.
Trustee Takaka?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye, motion carries. Okay. Approval and passage of ordinance 2021-134 and ordinance authorizing an agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield as a provider for the fully insured health, dental, vision insurance. And who, who's the life with?
It's through Blue Cross Blue Shield, through Dearborn National, it's a.
But Dearborn National's a separate company.
It's a, the, the coverage is through Blue Cross, but it's on the backend through Dearborn National.
Subsidiary?
Yeah.
Okay, so should we? Oh, it's a separate one, okay, okay, okay. Thank you. Alright, so is there a motion to approve ordinance 2021-134?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Comments or questions? Do you want to say anything, Kevin?
The only thing is, in front of you, there's a summary of the, the total cost at, at our last discussion. There were some questions about the overall cost increase for the village. So what we have here is a summary that's broken down by the different cost categories. So the village cost, the employee cost, and then the cost allocated for our retirees and, and those that are on Cobra. So if there's any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Yeah, and the total increase to, to us and the employees is in excess of what, $300,000?
Correct, so the village's overall cost increase is about 15% at about $236,000. The employees is about $90,000 at about 25%.
Okay, so it's $350,000? Oh.
Yeah, yeah, when you, when you add it all up, so year to year, $467,000, all lines of coverage, the total cost.
Yeah, okay, well.
See, the retirees went up 48% for their medical.
Yeah. Well, obviously we had losses last year, but it is encouraging that we've got the, the loss run, so to say, and trending better.
Yeah, so at our, correct. At, at the, at the committee, the whole last meeting, we did not yet have the October loss run, so we got those actually yesterday. And they're looking much better for October, so they're at 88%, which is a positive number. You want to be below the 100%. So we're, we're trending in the right direction. Unfortunately, that didn't lead to any rate relief on, on this current renewal, but it's a positive trend for, for the future.
Well, yeah, yeah, and hopefully, you know, COVID's behind us, you know, you, you want to hope and think that and, you know, because that, you know, we had, we had some huge spikes because of COVID. Okay, you can go to the doctor again, you know, or, or the hospitals and outpatient procedures and such. Okay, yeah, this will be a Happy New Year if it's, when it's over again, so. Okay, so that's, we got a motion and a second.
Yes, I have those.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Takaka?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, and, you know, in discussions, just last comment on this is that I know we got discussions with the collective bargaining groups and we don't, we will talk about HSA, but as properly put by Kevin, you know, we don't have to, we can just do that because we're, we're giving them, you know, a benefit. It's not like we're taking something away where, but the discussion on going from a zero deductible to a $500 deductible, you know, we'll put that on the table for sure. Because it's about, that, that's the $100,000 increase pretty much, it looks like, you know, for, among others, but it, it is about $100,000 difference, you know, and maybe the HSA card will become popular too, I don't know. Because you can certainly carry it over from year to year, so. Okay. Next is approval and passage of ordinance 2021-135 and ordinance authorizing an agreement with Dearborn National, Blue Cross Blue Shield to provide life insurance for the Village of Vern Hill's Employee Group Term Life Insurance Plan. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. And is the bottom line cost on this about $141,000 or?
Yeah, so the, the vision is about $15,000. The life insurance is about $45,000.
Four, okay, then with the dental, it brought it up to 141?
Yeah, the dental was part of the previous ordinance, that's.
Yeah, sure, so is the vision, right? Okay. Alright, roll call.
Trustee Takaka?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, next item is new business, approval and passage of ordinance 2021-136 and ordinance authorizing an agreement with Illinois County's Risk Management Trust to provide insurance coverage for the policy year of December 1st, 2021 through December 1st, 2022 for an amount not to exceed $300,000, $300,000, $300,593, which basically covers all lines except work comp, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any comments or questions on this one? If not, roll call.
I'm still, I need a motion. Motion to approve.
I'm jumping ahead.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Okay, any further comments or questions, roll call.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Takaka?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, next portion of this is approval and passage of ordinance 2021-137 and ordinance authorizing an agreement with the Illinois County's Risk Management Trust to provide workers' compensation insurance coverage for December 1st, 2021 through December 1st, 2022 for an amount not to exceed $494,000 and, four, $494,383. Everybody clear with that?
Yep.
Got it.
It's obviously the biggest portion. We, our experience under work comp has been less than stellar. Okay, well, with that said.
We had a decrease, it looks like, so that's.
We did, we did see a savings.
Yeah, over the original, the 817,000? That's what it's came in at for all lines. Now it's what, 795,000?
Just about.
Yeah. So, yeah, there's a.
Do the decreases come from us having less claims or the entire management trust?
Call in Tom Collins and saying, I want, I want some relief. That's about what happened.
Were we good, I mean, do we have many?
No, the claims are still lingering, you know, unfortunately done the work cap, you know. Any claims that occurred in this policy period, they don't even count towards what we, we would call, you know, your experience, Matt?
Yeah.
Because that goes back three years. And then next year, the, the oldest year will drop off and then this year comes after.
Starts rolling.
We got some bombers out there still, I mean, some big numbers. Yeah. Is that right then?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Yeah, that, you know, God bless the policeman chief, you know, they know how to make a claim.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. You're better off not saying anything. Okay, roll call.
Trustee Takaka?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, let's see. We got, duh, 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 duh. We got nothing else, except we have to go to closed session. No, we got, we got committee to hold, that's right. Committee to hold to discuss proposed 2022 road rehab program. Okay, so is there a motion to adjourn the, the board meeting and go into committee to hold?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Takaka?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, first item is approval of the committee to hold meeting minutes of November 2nd, 2021.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Comments, questions, deletions, corrections? If not, roll call.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaka?
Epstein.
President Byrne?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, Dave Brown is up, our Public Works Director and Village Engineer. You still doing that too?
I'm doing it both, thank you.
Okay, we have a map in front of us, can all the people?
We, we do.
It'll be on TV, right?
Very good. Thank you very much, wanted to present the 2022 Road Rehab Program. It's typical that we would present this ahead of our May 1 budget.
Sure.
What we'd like to do is get out in front of things while the, the weather's a little nicer, we can design things. And our goal is always to have the bid sets ready to go ahead of other communities. As you know, we are partnering with Libertyville and Mundaline, so we coordinate it, we get better unit prices and that's been positive over the last three or so years. So our proposal right now includes Muirfield Village, Torrey Pines, St. Andrews and the westernmost section of Greg's Parkway. On the map, it's very hard to, to tell, but there's one section of Sycamore just off of Greg's Parkway that was addressed a few years ago, so that part is obviously not included. The project cost is $1,082,310 is our estimate. We're not sure where fuel prices are, are going to be this year, that's our estimate. My staff's done a very good job year after year bringing them in under budget. So I anticipate that once we get the bids, if we have to dial back a little bit to stay within budget, we certainly will, will do that.
What, what is asphalt a yard?
Tons can be 70, 70 bucks a ton for asphalt, so.
So is that so many cubic yards or is it just a ton?
Well, it's a.
It's all weighted, eh?
It, it's a weight and then you figure out the thickness and then what the area is from that.
I'm on concrete, that's a yard per yard, cubic yard.
Con, concrete, we're usually doing curb and gutter, so that's a lineal foot removal and replacement. Somewhere in the 25 to 27 bucks per lineal foot for that. But the good news is we've went through some of our older sections of town. We are now looking, Greg's Landing, Greg's Landing is now of the age of, we are considering doing resurfacing projects there. The good news is we've done a really good job in inspecting that subdivision. Our costs are going to drop because we're not touching as many curbs, we're not touching as many aprons. A lot of it's going to end up being just milling and replacing it with a new surface. So I think we'll get more miles for, for our buck. Please understand, in terms of Greg's Parkway, instead of doing all of Greg's Parkway all at once, our plan is, we're going to start with the, for people who don't know, Greg's Landing, when it was constructed, the west side was done first and then the east side of, of the Seabee was done after. So the earlier ones are on the west side, so we're going to work on the west side and then move easterly. We will be up in Greg's Landing for the next five to eight years easily. We are looking at Greg's Parkway would probably be done in three different steps, but we did include a five-year draft plan. That is merely a draft, we do alter it depending if we have a water main project or other utility projects in the area, or if we look at a year and it had a really bad frost in one area, we may adapt that five-year plan.
Do we get any help, help from the county on Greg's Parkway or Huntington?
We, we get help in terms of.
I mean, as far as the cost.
Financially, no. Financially, no.
No.
They, they do give us their input as far as Greg's Parkway and Huntington in terms of what we can or can't do by that agreement. But essentially, that is our, our proposed program. We're seeking board's concurrence that this would be the program for next year that will allow my staff to go out and start marking up curbs and putting the plans together. And so that's my presentation and.
So how many lane miles is this that you're going to do next year in basically Greg's Landing?
I don't have that number offhand, but I'm anticipating it's around two miles.
It's all, huh?
So for each section, how, how long do you anticipate it will take to do each of these different colored sections? And how do we mitigate the traffic disturbance?
Good question. So in, in terms of that, we really, because we're working with Libertyville and Mundaline, it's kind of a sequential operation. They'll go and do the curbs in one area and then they'll go to the next and the next and then they'll follow up with the milling and then they'll follow up with the final surface. To answer your question, how long it would take for this whole area? They would start approximately May 1 and expectations and our bid specs require that they complete it by 4th of July. So May and June, so 60 days.
Not bad.
So they're doing all of these roads essentially at the same time in terms of milling it all, like?
They may, they may start removing curb and gutter in one area and start working through and then they'll jump to another pod and then they will come in and start milling the other area that they've just done the curb and gutter replacement and then start milling that area. So they just kind of follow sequentially curb and gutter, then the milling, then the final surface.
And then you do half the street at a time so people can still drive and then you do the other half?
We do.
A few weeks later, or is that how?
Um, we typically have them only working on one side of the road. People can park on the other side and then we flip within each subdivision.
What's the width of Greg's Parkway, you know, back to curb to back to curb?
Depending which area, it's 36 feet back to back.
Plus we got the median.
And we have the median, yeah. So typically, cities, our, our standard is 27 feet back to back.
Right, right, right. So, yeah, the only street that's, that's going to be more expensive is Greg's Parkway.
Yes, yes.
Now, does that got to be, you, you're just going to mill that too?
Yes.
So ba, basically for those watching at home, what do you wind up putting a two-inch lift on all these streets?
We, we grind, I don't know about Greg's, we're doing the corners and then we'll, we'll figure out exactly how much we're milling, but very likely it's milling of two and a half inches and replacement of two and a half inches for, for Greg's.
Yeah, okay.
We.
Because the total rebuild of Greg's Parkway, that's built to a real high engineering standard, right?
Yes.
Is that like full depth, the asphalt and all that stuff?
It's got a structural number of 4.0, which is comparison would be Butterfield Road.
Yeah.
So we did hold Zale's feet to the fire in terms of making sure Greg's Parkway was built very well and to high standards.
Yeah, the same thing for Huntington.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, good. Okay, I don't know, does anybody else have any question? And then, but sidewalks will be a separate, separate budget item?
As part of any sidewalk that needs to be addressed, we take care of it as part of this streetscape improvement.
Same with the, the aprons?
If, if needed, which we don't really anticipate a lot of curb work. If we're touching curb and it impacts the apron, then we will address the apron. But for the most part, we're looking to, to mill asphalt and put new asphalt down and like I said, we'll get a lot more miles for our dollar than we did in some of the older sections.
Then how much money are we getting from the state to do this?
Well, um.
Are they going to, they're not covering this all amount? Are they going to cut, they're not covering this whole amount?
No, uh, typically, uh, we, we ask for one point two million dollars a year. Typically, we get, uh, maybe in the, uh, five hundred, five hundred and sixty thousand, uh, range, so.
Any chance we could get more this year, just because they got, what, a, how much was laid on them, a hundred? It's, it's several millions of dollars, right, to do billions, I should say, of dollars to do work in Illinois?
Thank you for that, for the infrastructure bill?
We got it, you know, yeah. Yeah, they're not going to think about a subdivision, that's probably, yeah, it's probably, I'm on the pipe. I'm on the pipe, I, I apologize.
Uh, but to your point, uh, the following year, we are looking to, uh, improve Lakeview, and that would be eighty percent federal dollars. So, um, we are capturing some funds there.
Yeah.
Why does Lakeview qualify? Why, why does Lakeview qualify for federally funds, federal funds?
Uh, just a, a, a different, uh, project, different process. Uh, we go through the, uh, Lake County Council of Mayors, and they, uh, uh, they, they go through, uh, awarding different projects. So those are, uh, highway capacity projects, and this one with, uh, Lakeview is going to be widening intersections at, uh, improving traffic signals. So those are more eligible for, uh, for federal dollars.
Sixty, right?
Because they're capacity enhancements compared to a grind and overlay. Uh, the Lakeview project, one, uh, positive thing for us is, we were going to widen from the police station to Philip Road all the way to the post office, and we, uh, a, a prior board made the decision not to widen that, that stretch. What that means is, we still added it to the program, so we're getting eighty percent reimbursement for just milling and overlaying that one. So there's some benefit. That one, it would be very similar to a local road.
And then I, I saw you have Centennial in twenty twenty-five. I'm just kind of curious, do, uh, you guys survey, so if the neighborhood is the same age as, say, Greg's Landing, but you're four, four years down the road, is it amount of traffic, is it, you guys survey the land, is it one that could? Are there a lot of factors involved when you determine?
Yeah, a very good question. Um, so what we, what we do is, we have a pavement management study, so we have them go out and, uh, bear with me, they use a DynaFlick machine that imparts a load onto the pavement, and then there's some sensors, and it gives you good information and data. It tells you what's happening below the surface, so we use that in terms of a rating of the pavement. Then we also know the age of the pavement. Um, for Centennial Crossing, those roadways are maybe two years newer than the original ones for Greg, so that's why it's a little bit further back. But there's a variety of, uh, factors, uh, the pavement study, uh, the age. And then we look at the five-year plan, and my staff and I, uh, they do the majority of the work, they just bring me out thereafter, and they will look at the pavement, and they'll say, something's happening to this pavement versus this, and we may alter it. But it's actually putting eyes on the, the pavement also.
Speaking of that, uh, Route forty-five's supposed to.
Ooh.
That's a, that's a tough one.
Uh, uh, did you say Route forty-five?
Yep, Route forty-five has been pushed back, I understand.
Uh, Route forty-five, uh, continues to be in the phase two study, and, uh, there has been very, very, very limited movement on that. Uh, in our community survey of, uh, maybe four or five years ago, it was rated as one of the most important things for, uh, our community to have forty-five, uh, addressed. I, I know one of the big factors is Illinois is struggling, and Illinois, uh, would have to come up with, I think right now, it's seventy-four million dollars for the construction of that, that project, and they have not, uh, added that to a five-year plan. Any, uh, political muster, uh, that anyone can, uh, help with, uh, we really would like to, uh, push on that. I've made calls, and I, I do what I can, but, uh, any assistance is appreciated.
That would be a project, though, that might be subject to getting some of the infrastructure money, correct?
I, I think so.
Yeah, good possibility on that.
Well, how much has Illinois gotten for infrastructure? Do they, have that been published yet? I know that they showed the whole one point, whatever trillion it was, what it was going to go to.
Yes, sir, I've, I've read so many, uh, documents on that and totals, uh, I, I don't know the actual.
Well, they must have requested something a while ago, I would hope, right?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, what else, anything?
So if, uh, my recommendation, uh, is, uh, if the board sees fit, uh, that the village board concurs with the proposed twenty twenty-two road rehabilitation program and direct staff to move forward with obtaining IDOT's approval and bidding of said project, if, uh, there's concurrence from the board, then.
Motion to adjourn.
If you could.
Is there a motion to adjourn? As per Dave's. Is there a second?
Second, okay.
Any further comments or questions? Uh, if not, roll call.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaka.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
There's, you know, out of our COVID, uh, money, which is what, one point six billion?
The first installment was, uh, one point eight, so the total is about three point six.
How much are we getting, three point one total?
About three point six total.
Okay. Well, here, we got, we could throw, what, about six hundred thousand at this project?
So right now, under the current rules, road programs are not in eligible use of the money. However, there is legislation in the House, I believe, right now, that's looking to add those types of projects to eligible, eligible uses.
You mean, at, at the federal level?
At the federal level.
Yeah, that would be kind of nice.
I think so.
Yeah, no kidding, you know. So we could, what can we use it for, again, Kevin?
So from an infrastructure standpoint, it can be for water and sewer and broadband. And then there's a bevy of other uses for business assistance, uh, resident assistance, offset lost revenue, which is probably our most, uh, ideal use.
So we could use that for, uh, all of that?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we could qualify for all of it.
So there won't be.
Fiber?
Uh, yeah, that, that would be part of it, yeah, fiber would be a knowledgeable use.
How much would that cost? I think a lot of people asking about fiber.
Yeah, I, I.
Who's the carrier on it, though?
Who is the carrier on the fiber?
Probably Comcast, perhaps?
Probably AT&amp;T, too, I mean, you're going to have more than one carrier.
That'd be a costly project, Dave, to have fiber more accessible in the village.
I wonder if that's something, uh, that's done at a village level or at a, uh, different level.
Oh, county?
Federal.
Federal, for fiber?
Didn't they change the law where they kind of took the ladder that out of our hands?
Yeah, I think generally speaking, that would be a, a different agency that would, would tackle a fiber project, probably.
Yeah. Thank you. But is there, is there any time soon when they, they might start, you know, attaching the devices to the, you know, light bulbs?
The small wireless, the facility, uh.
They're already.
Yeah, I know they're already rolling those out, yeah.
Where, where they at?
Uh, there's one right at the corner of, uh, uh, Indian Wood and Greenleaf.
Yep.
That, that will help everybody, you know, huh?
Yeah, and then I saw one somewhere in Greg's Landing.
Museum and Lakeview, there's one there, the one you mentioned, um, there's one, uh, at, uh, Aspen and Sixty. So there are a few around town.
But you don't notice them, they're incredibly small.
So are they put, who's putting these in?
I'm sorry?
Who puts these in? Is that state?
These were, uh.
Somebody does them in the middle.
It, uh, it could be Verizon, T-Mobile, who's now merged with Sprint, formerly Clear Wireless.
So you've got to be one of their customers, is what we're saying, to have access to it, or no?
No.
Uh, the small cell sites, what they do is, they communicate with the large cell sites.
Are, are we talking cell towers, or are we talking Wi-Fi?
Um. Both. Accommodation, both.
No, it's, it's, it's basically a repeater for the five G, because five.
Oh, okay, never mind, never mind.
Five G will not travel as far.
Never mind, I'm way off, yeah, so I'm.
And these are not, you know, big, big structures?
Yeah, fi, fi, five G doesn't have the dispersment that, uh, of, of an old-fashioned.
No, I thought these were like Wi-Fi, these companies put in like Wi-Fi hotspots and for public Wi-Fi in certain areas.
No, it's, it's basically a repeater for the five G network, yeah, yeah.
Good, all right, well, what's the help? I'm getting a free watch out from AT&amp;T, because my watch I had was so obsolete, it's three G. I said, I'm getting it free? Yeah, I paid ten bucks a month for it, oh, they'll probably jack the price of it, you know? In any event.
Nothing's free, Rod.
Yeah, it's free, yeah, no, I, no, it's true, I, I'm sure the price, instead of ten bucks, it'll jump. Uh, okay, uh, anything else on this?
No, you're fine.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to what?
Mayor, we will not need a closed session this evening, just.
Oh, thank God for small favors, okay. All right, well, with Dan said, uh, happy Thanksgiving to all who might watch this, or, of course, we're on every social media outlet, so. We had TikTok yet? Okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay, well, uh, is there, so, uh, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and, uh.
Happy Thanksgiving.
I guess the turkey crossed the road.
You did need a, we need a motion to adjourn.
Okay, all right, is there a motion to adjourn? Voice vote, right?
Second.